If everybody could find your seats, we're about to begin again. And the recording will go back on YouTube. And we're back. We're going to go to item number seven. This is a public hearing. This is a rezone from agriculture to rural residential and regional commercial to R-19 and R-110 and general plan amendment from very low density to low density residential and concept plan for Star Haven. This is located approximately at the northwest corner of 400 West and Crossroads Boulevard. Ken Evans is our applicant. And we'll turn the time over to Kara Knighton for our presentation.
Let me jump ahead a little bit past. Alright. So as was mentioned, this is a proposed rezone and general plan amendment and an informal review of a concept plan. So on your left-hand side is the proposed land use. You can see rural residential and low-density residential towards the bottom in the lighter yellow. And then your zoning map is on your right-hand side. The light kind of green is rural residential and then the slightly darker green is agricultural. So this is the proposed plan. So you'll see 400 West to the, I guess it would be your right-hand side. And then you can see Aspen Hills on the side closest to the existing residence. So what you're seeing here is six proposed single-family residential lots and 50 footprint development units. On that, because of the single access point for the 51 units technically with the existing residence, through the course of the preliminary plot, you will most likely see one of those lots drop unless they have a secondary access provided. Since you saw this last in your work session, the city council held a work session on January 2nd, 2018. The city council did not have any issue with the trail running along the east side of 400 West as proposed by the applicant. Since that time, the applicant, Ken Evans, and Intermountain Healthcare have proposed an agreement as outlined in your staff report. The agreement essentially is that IHC will dedicate the additional five feet of land necessary for the installation of the trail on the east side of 400 West and Kevin Evans will pay the cost of installation. And as always, you have three options, recommending a positive recommendation to the council, a negative recommendation, or a continuation of the item. In this case, staff is recommending that you forward a positive recommendation to the city council. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to join us? Hi, Ken. Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Ken Evans. I live at 11282 West, 8570 North in Saratoga Springs.
Hi, Ken. Did you want to add anything to the presentation tonight?
No, I think I would like to thank the planning staff and engineering staff for being very good to work with and helping to resolve some issues that were challenging to my development, proposed development. And the recommendations and issues that were brought up at both the Planning Commission work session and city council work session were helpful in that resolution, so.
Okay, great. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up public comment on item number seven. Right now, this is the rezone from agriculture, rural residential, and regional commercial to R-19, R-110, and general plan amendment for very low density to low-density residential. Given there aren't any public comments, we'll close public comment at this time and open it up to the Planning Commission.
Understanding that the city council seems friendly to the idea of having the trail on the east side, what is the update on how that is going to connect to the underpass when in with significant cost?
So during that discussion with the council, it was a work session, and council gave direction to staff that once stuff comes in on the southern side of this project -- can I borrow the mouse? Thank you. When something comes in right on this southern side, the staff needed to ensure that the trail gets back on the west side of the canal in order to connect down to that underpass.
Is there a plan currently to be able to cross, I guess that's Commerce Boulevard? Crossroads?
Yes, it's Crossroads Boulevard. So there is currently not a plan. But Dave, if I am correct, staff is being directed to update our parks and trails master plan.
Yeah, one of our kind of goals this year is to update the trails plan. And so it's been a few years, and so that'll all be part of it.
So essentially, we're pushing, we're -- I mean, this is a -- so what kind of action is this, a rezone? So this is legislative recommendation. And so part of the legislative recommendation is to, I guess, deviate from the trails plan as we have it right now? Is that correct? So it's a rezone, but it's also a trails master plan or whatnot, general plan amendment?
Let me answer that. So the trails master plan is, just like the general plan, is a very general and broad document. So, you know, speaking in a general sense, the trail is going to go basically in the same location, just not right along the canal. Instead, it's going to be on the east side, along the road, along 400 West.
And I suppose some of my heartburn with this is when we had, when we met with the concept plan, it was like going to be over the canal and the canal was going to be filled in, and it didn't seem like there was much deviation from that. And then it went to the city council, and it was not following the canal at that point. It was on the west side of the road. And then it went from there to the east side of the road. So, you know, going from having not much deviation, because we brainstormed in the concept plan, to moving the trail just following that sidewalk, and it seemed like, you know, the planning staff wasn't very agreeable to that. And then went up to the city council, that's the plan that was presented to city council, and then the city council, of course, is friendly moving it to the east side. And so what kind of flexibility is there, and just for the future, the Planning Commission, because we did spend considerable time on the concept or the work session on that? Give us some direction on that. How much, I mean, if it's just moved around, and how much should we actually spend on things like that?
Well, you know, to actually clarify, the trails master plan shows it along the canal on the east side of the property currently. Staff was going to recommend to the council to change it to the other side of the road toward, you know, on Ken's, on applicant's property. So currently, as it stands, the trails master plan shows it on the east side. It's going to be on the east side now, except not along the canal, but along the road. So I understand what your concern is. You're welcome to make whatever recommendation to the council that you'd like to make. That's up to you.
As long as we can get back to the trail, I just don't want it to increase the cost or, you know, punt it down the road and double the cost for somebody else. You know, that's the concern I have. As long as it gets back to the underpass in a way that makes reasonable sense, you know, we're not going to move it to the east side and have it go, you know, over the river and through the woods on somebody else's dime to get back to that underpass. I don't know that that's, you know, quite the attitude that, you know, we should have. That being said, if it makes sense for it to be on the east side, I have no problem with it. As long as it, as staff can justify that for not only this developer, because we want to be fair and equitable to this developer, but also future developers. And that is the only comment I have.
Thank you, just briefly. So basically, you know, originally, a trail was supposed to follow the canal through, so the trail would stop here. At what point does it go from there? Most likely, it would come back to this corner anyway. Is this going to be a controlled intersection at some point? I don't know. But you wouldn't have a trail crossing right here. We're not going to go into the road. There's too many utilities in this roadway now, so there's no way to go onto the road, like further down, down the line. So if the trail coming in, whether it were originally follow the canal or come down here along the east side here, it's still really going to come back to the same point. And so the end result really is going to be the same.
Any other comments?
I thought that we wouldn't have a controlled intersection there because it was too close to the other one.
And it could be, you know, never say never. Who knows? But it definitely is not going to go into the road, but it's still going to end up in the same location, whether you go on the east side or west side.
Are you saying east, you're talking east of the canal?
Well, as Kevin was talking, originally, you know, this is the subject property here.
Right.
So the trail was originally supposed to be down along here, down the side of the canal. So that is the east side of his property. We also refer to the east side of 400, where the trail will be located over here now. The trails master plan shows it on the office's side. Staff discussed this and was going to make the recommendation that we move it to the other side, to the west side of 400 West. So when Ken came in, we asked him to put it on his property, and we were able to discuss that and hear his concerns about having it on his side of the road. Now, we're just, we're going back to having it on the side of the road that the current trails master plan shows it on. So we're actually, this is more consistent than the trails master.
Okay, because I just couldn't, isn't where the IHC, where it shows where the IHC grant is or deed or whatever, isn't that west, that's the west side of 400 West, right?
North is to your left.
North is to the left, so why?
East is up.
Yeah, but it's on the, the IHC part, that little strip is on the west side.
Different road.
Am I looking at it wrong?
That's just a segment they own. IHC owned that little silver.
So IHC is getting that segment to the applicant. Is that right?
Oh, sorry. Can I clarify? I think you're getting a little confused. Let me help. So the applicant actually purchased this piece from IHC so that it had some continuity with the west side of the road. Because, so the trail is going on the east side here, and IHC is willing to dedicate the five extra feet needed, but this side, Mr. Evans actually purchased from IHC, so there was some continuity with his own project.
So the part that the IHC is going to deed over isn't shown on there?
No.
Oh, okay. That's where my confusion was.
The trails master plan is on the IHC's side.
Okay, that's where my confusion was, because all it shows is the IHC, it says IHC right there, and it's on the west side. It doesn't say anything about the east side, so, okay. Sorry, I didn't need to interrupt.
Glad we got that clarified. Commissioner Steele?
Well, I have a few comments. I want to ask all of us to take a mental walk down crossroads from the eastern end of the city, the city limits. And can anyone tell me of any residential property that you would come to prior to Mr. Evans? I've seen some consternation. I don't think there is any. And this is the first that has been proposed to be residential. And Mr. Evans has said that his residential people do not want to be next to regional commercial. However, he has sandwiched it in between two parcels of regional commercial, and I believe on the other side, there is commercial or will be. So my concern is that this is going to be wrong for a long time. It just doesn't make good planning sense, especially when you're going to wall it off at the sidewalk. It's just going to be that one area that's got this wall on it, and then the rest of it is commercial. I think it's the wrong product on this piece of land. And I wanted to ask, in the staff report, it's at the top, it says that part of this is already regional commercial. Which part is that?
It's the IHC piece that Ken Evans purchased.
Okay.
Yep. It's just a tiny little silver that contains the sidewalk.
Okay. All right. I've got a little bit more, not a whole lot. I'm concerned about our definitions in our code, our land planning code, because it says that in the verbiage, and I realize the chart says something else, but it says this zone allows for establishment of single-family neighborhoods on medium-sized lots that are characteristic of traditional suburban residential neighborhoods. And I, there's no way I can make that be a suburban, a traditional suburban residential neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission?
I've got a couple. Oh. There's a, I just want to point out a typo. On the very first staff report page, under previous meetings at the city council work session as January 2nd, 2017. On the p, let's see, I think, I think it's, you have up, but let me make sure. Where is the?
Commissioner Kilgore, is your microphone on?
Yes. I'm just not talking to it, sorry.
Okay. You have to talk directly into the microphone.
Okay.
Recording to pick it up.
Okay. On, there's a, what is this page? It's not, it's not that one. It's the one that has all the elevations, not the elevations, the contour lines and things. Contour, yeah. Where is the trail on there? Is it, is it on there?
It's not on there with this one.
All right. Well, again, the key says that there's a, the key gives a color and a line for the trail, and then I don't see that color on there, or the color is just different. But it's just simply not on there, right? Okay, we already had the west-east discussion. Oh, in phase one, I guess there's no open space at all. And then I think somewhere in the staff report, there was a comment that residents in phase one will not be using any open space amenities in phase two. Is that, is that correct?
Most likely. So for the phase one, it is an option that the applicant can choose to pay a fee in lieu, if he so chooses.
Okay. But there isn't any access to it either. Right? Because all the, all the, I mean, it's walled off, that section, that phase is walled off, so there's really no access. So are we okay with that?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I apologize. We could actually count the trail towards the open space requirements, and that could be a requirement of phase one, just a thought. We're not really at that stage of reviewing the project, but that could be during the first phase, just as a suggestion.
That would be, yeah, that would be good. And I'm bringing this up just because I want to make sure that you don't get stuck on a requirement that we have later on saying that, oh, you have a problem because you don't. So what is our requirement for?
Could I comment on that?
Open spaces, phases. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry.
It's a good question. I originally had planned open space and was trying to figure out what kind of amenities to put on half-acre lots adjacent to a new park with a trail connecting contiguous on the north of the six lots. And previous planning director and current planning staff suggested that I seriously consider payment in lieu, because what kind of playground amenities or trail amenities or pavilion amenities are going to actually add value to .4 to half-acre lots? They didn't, it didn't make sense. They wouldn't be used. The people that have expressed interest in the lots already weren't interested in it, and so it was actually planning suggestion that I consider that. I think it was a good suggestion. I think it makes it for, the cul-de-sac development will actually be a better development as a result.
Yeah, I was thinking, like, what the city attorney had suggested, you know, using the trail as part of that, as well as in payment in lieu of. Just wanted you to have options, because what is our, do we, what is our requirement as far as open space by phase? I know that you're allowed to bank open space, you know, if you're phasing the development, but there is, you know, but the open space still has to count the entire development. And so as far as square footage goes and everything, so I just, I'm just thinking that if you have some options that, you know, without, if you don't have any open space on this, on this, that parcel, in that phase one, that at least you have some options to take care of it so that you don't get stuck, you know, without saying, but whereas, you've got to have some kind of a phase plan for it.
And I probably won't be phasing it. I'll probably be doing it all at the same time.
Okay, well, then that is a problem.
And there's almost 40% open space.
Yeah.
The larger development, the footprint lot development.
Sounds good. I think if you phase it, then we have some issues. You go, there are many ways to take care of it, but I just want to make sure that you had options, because there doesn't seem to be any space for you to create open space, so you had to come up with some other, other way. But if you're going to do it all at once, if it's not phased, then that wouldn't be an issue then.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Ken, done? Are you done?
Did you have some?
I had one.
You're still going?
I'm waiting for him.
Oh, oh, yeah. One last one.
Sure.
There was a, I think, I think in the engineering report, there was a comment about looking into the connectivity issue for the connector road with the Mountain View corridor. What was the result of? I think the city council brought that issue, or it was brought up at the city council meeting, and then the response was that there needs to be, it has to be looked into, how the connector road will connect with the Mountain View corridor. And I was just wondering if there was any results.
Yeah, so you'll notice that's not in the staff report now. And that, we did study that and found that it would not be advantageous to connect that to the frontage road.
Okay, so that's been resolved then?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. I have what I thought was a bunch of informal comments, so I'm just going to strike those, and I'm going to go right to how I view what the general plan is telling us for this. On page 10, this area is defined as a low-density residential, and it's further defined as areas designated for conventional single-family homes. When I went and I looked up what a conventional single-family home, the definition I found was, "Single-family homes are built on lots larger than the structure itself, adding an area surrounding the house, which is commonly called a yard." One of the fears that I have for this area because of where it is, been between the commercial and hospital with a potential helipad in the future. I'm afraid that we may start out, I share some of council member McComber's fears, in that this may start out as a 55-year-old community, but it may transition into something else. I don't really care for the footprint lots, in part because there's not going to be distance, very little, there's no requirements for distance between the houses. And so they're not going to have a traditional lot. So I basically, I may have been able to change my views about this a little bit if we had some sort of buffer on the Crossroads Boulevard, like Commissioner still mentioned, because that is all commercial and we can, I like, I don't like driving down in the middle of a city and seeing commercial, commercial, and then residential and then commercial again. It's, I would prefer that we not do that in Saratoga Springs. So that's all my comments I have. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I just have a quick question. What is, what is this private driveway? Where is it going?
It goes to my home.
Okay.
I'm violating developer rule number one. I'm developing and living in the same development.
Okay.
I've been here for 20 years. That's, that's my home.
Okay. That's it?
Just one observation. It appears that the, both the general plan and the zoning have it, have no commercial on that piece of property. It's, looks like it's residential or rural residential or potentially agricultural. So, I mean, we can do with that what we want, but it appears that's the existing.
Recommendation only.
Could I make a comment on that? I meant to add that previously. I, I think that had to do with the previous master plan, general plan, because there's, there's no regional commercial in this, with the exception of if that little strip that I bought from IHC is regional commercial. And then also, the property to the west of my property is also zoned agricultural. In fact, all of the property to the west clear to the current frontage road is currently zoned agricultural, with the exception of one, as Commissioner Steele pointed out, there's one narrow piece of property that years ago was zoned commercial. It was going to be an agricultural commercial. It was zoned as a, as a conditional use for a nursery. The individuals, however, moved to Colorado, sold the property, and the zoning stayed. That's, just wanted to clarify that since it's been mentioned several times.
So is that IHC strip then that you bought, that you purchased, that is currently zoned RC? So then we have to do an amendment on that one as well?
Yeah, you will. It's outlined in your motion.
I can just ask a question to staff. There's been several comments up here about the definition of suburban or, you know, single-family household. In the staff report, you indicated that you were convinced that it was conclusive or it met the criteria or whatnot, or the intent of the general plan. Could you just comment on that? The disparity between, I think, what I'm reading, your conclusion and some of the concerns up here?
So we would consider this to be low-density development. It's not attached in any way to the next unit over. So it's not a triplex or duplex or anything like that. It's still technically a single-family home, not attached.
In the R-19 zone, it is permitted to have footprint development, this is what this is. And so he's just following with the zoning code that allow him to do.
So I have a question. So the proposed wall on the south side of the property, that's really characteristic of a lot of the neighborhoods. Where I grew up in Arizona, there's walls everywhere, but they do things to beautify them. They put a lot of plants and trees and bushes in front of them to make them look more aesthetically pleasing. What is your plan on that side of the property?
That's a very good question. And aesthetics are really important to this development. As I had mentioned at the work session, I'm partnering with a builder who has done this kind of development near the Payson Temple. It's a high-end, upscale, 55-plus community. And they're very conscious about the quality and the aesthetics. I intend, my engineer has assured me that we can do some birmingham on the south end, so a six-foot pre-cast concrete wall with faux stone pillars. We want an attractive one. There's also, I'm required to put an eight-foot sidewalk trail connecting along Crossroads Boulevard that's not even on my property, all the way around to, as you can see, to where the west, to be parallel with my west boundary if you were to go north. That property is currently owned by the state. There seems to be-- There seems to be a lack of clarity between the state and Saratoga Springs as to who is required to do what with that property. This isn't a criticism. It's just an observation because I've spoken with several people at the state. I have been trying to put together and understand that the state may be willing, if the city goes along with it, to do something to where that area could have some landscaping in it. I don't own it. The city may have some requirements as far as maintenance to it, from what the state tells me. The state does own it. They do not plan to dedicate where the, where Crossroads Boulevard makes the turn and that section that's there. Nobody wants to do anything with it. I would, I would welcome any kind of joint participation that we could work out. I think it's going to take the city, along with me, to do, and the state, to agree to do something there. And that would, that would answer that question. I mean, or deal, deal with that issue. And I think it could make, it could, it could be a beautification area and a good transition. Right now, it's weeds and whatever trash people throw out there. I clean it up. I don't know that anybody else does. It's not my property. It's just there.
And then have you, I know I talked about this last time we met. We talked about the kind of fence that you're going to put in there. Have you, have you moved towards a certain kind of fencing that you would use on that south side of the property?
Uh, yes. It'll be, again, some birmingham with a six-foot precast, concrete precast wall.
These are kinds with the pillars and the slatter?
It'll have attract, it's, we're looking at a seventy-five to a hundred-dollar, a lineal foot fence. So it would be a very nice, attractive fence, not one of the vanilla ones that they put up. As, as far, you ask about fencing, what, what I'm having the develop, the company I'm going to have do the development a bit on right now includes, on the north side, it will be a semi-private fence because it's adjacent to the trail that runs east and west.
Open space, right.
But every thirty to forty feet, thirty to thirty-five feet, there will be a faux stone pillar. And then the semi-private fence. That, the, the pillars will match the pillars in the, the fence that will be the, on the, run along four hundred west and along Crossroads Boulevard.
All right.
Does that answer your question?
You've helped me. Thank you.
And also to clarify, I purchased the small, or the strip of land that IHC owned. It was of no value to them. In fact, I understand they offered to donate it to the city. I purchased it from them because I was concerned that it could be used to both landscape and make sure that the continuation of both fencing and landscaping would make for an aesthetically pleasing entrance into four hundred west.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Any other questions? Any other discussion? I think we've discussed this. I'll entertain a motion.
As the decision is legislative with significant discretion, the planning commission may instead choose to forward a negative recommendation to the city council. I move to forward a negative recommendation to the city council for the Star Haven subdivision general plan amendment of approximately three point six-two acres from very low-density to low-density and rezone of property eighteen point six acres on parcels five two eight nine eight zero one one, five two eight nine eight zero 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 two, five two eight nine eight zero 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 three, five two eight nine eight zero 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 six, five two eight nine eight zero zero one oh, five two eight nine eight zero 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 nine, five eight zero three two zero one eight zero. From regional, from agricultural, regional, commercial, and residential to R-ten and R-nine, as outlined in exhibit two with the findings and conditions below. And I don't know if I need to add anything into this, but it's not in the best interest of the city to place residential between regional, commercial. And that's one reason. And I don't know whether that would be a finding or a condition. It would be a finding. And do I need to do more than that?
It's up to you.
I, I'll use what is on the, on the, that staff has put in as reasons. And I gave one, and number two and three also would apply.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there a question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So that's three out of three. Let's, let's go down the line. So we have a list of who did what?
I voted aye. Do I need to provide a reason or is it?
You can if you want, but let's go to the vote first and then we'll do a reason.
Okay. I voted to do, uh, to.
You voted aye.
I voted nay.
Nay?
Nay. Aye.
Okay, so we're split. So I believe that that means, and you can give your, your.
Four votes.
Right.
So the motion.
So the motion does, does not pass. Is that right?
No decision.
Does this go on as a no decision, no motion to the city council? Brianna wanted to say why.
I do. I just wanted to kind of say that it's not so much the residential that I have a concern about. It's just maybe the way it's structured. And if, if there was a way to make it face more inwards and make it look more like a traditional community and set it back a little bit more, it would cost you some homes, but I think that would mitigate some of the concerns people have about residential being right on Crosswoods. So it's not necessarily the residential I have an issue with, but, because that's in our general plan, that we want that there. So maybe just, just a reconfiguration of it, and that's kind of why I voted the way I did, so.
Could I make a comment?
Just a.
Inappropriate.
Just a moment. Commissioner Chapman?
Generally, in the past, when we've had, you know, any indication that this wasn't a fairly uniform decision, we've had an opportunity to discuss it amongst the planning commissioners and really try and understand each other a little bit better. Commissioner Steele brought up some land use issues, and I don't know if I fully understand those. You know, the, the general plan and the zoning map seem to be in accordance with what the applicant is trying to do, and the, the city staff seem satisfied that it meets that. Commissioner Steele, you indicated that you weren't satisfied with that. I would like to hear more of why you don't feel satisfied with that, if you'd be willing.
Okay. May I just say that we, when we were going through the general plan, it was rather rushed. And I, I do not remember this area specifically. It could have been put in after we saw it. Some things were changed. Had this been brought to the forefront, I would have said absolutely not for the housing for the reasons I've put forth. And I have seen this done in Portland, Oregon, where there's commercial, commercial fence, commercial, commercial fence. It just looks horrible. It's hard for you to find street addresses. Not everybody has a GIS. And so to me, it's, since the general plan is advisory, I am not taking, my opinion is I'm not taking their advice. And in, I would propose, after we've gotten through with this, that we go back and look at the general plan and see if we've got any more inconsistencies like this, because I think it is an inconsistency. That's my thinking. Do you have any other questions?
So just to give you, I've just reviewed the bylaws. So if it's a tie vote, what it says, it goes to the council without a favorable recommendation. It doesn't say negative recommendation. It says without a favorable recommendation. So that's different from a negative recommendation. Can you see that there's a differentiation there? However, just, just for kind of background information, the building of four hundred west was a basically council goal. They wanted to basically have connection to Shea Park, or Shea Park? It is Shea Park. They wanted to provide some connection to Shea Park. Mr. Evans did help participate in, in donating that property to the city so they could build that road. And in those early discussions, and I, I participated in those early discussions, Mr. Evans has always been very, it's been very, what am I trying to say? He's been very transparent about what his, his goals were with this, with the development of his, of his property. He's always represented to the city staff as well as to the council that he's going to do residential development here. The council and city staff never objected to that. But he has, he has, he's been very upfront with his intentions of his develop, of developing his property as a residential development.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you because when he appeared before us about the cell tower, he was proposing commercial along Redwood Road. And he told us that. And if it's in the minutes that I said that, I felt better because that he had proposed regional commercial. Now, that was what went in when, when we heard that, when we heard the.
Okay.
So I'd have to disagree with you.
That would be true. But as far as his meetings with staff, he's always been upfront about his intentions as a resident, to have a residential development there. But at this point, it goes to the council without a, without a favorable recommendation. So you can leave it at that, or planning commission, of course, could reconsider their motion as well.
I just wanted to say why I voted against the motion. Given that you live there and you don't want, maybe you don't want to have res, I mean, you don't want to have businesses around you, maybe you'd rather have residents around you. I can see where that would, you know, from my own perspective, if I owned a lot of land and, and I wouldn't want to surround myself with a bunch of commercial, even though that it may be better for the city. I really would want to have it surrounded by things that were homogeneous to what's already there. So that's, that's why I voted the way I did.
Did you want to say something?
I'm, I'm, since, I guess since this is legislative, I have a little bit of discretion. I can say that's a, you know, I live on Aspen Hills, and I didn't participate in any of the, the neighborhood discussion or whatnot because I'm a member of the planning commission and trying to be apolitical. I can say though, that the sentiment of the residents were, you know, that they did not want commercial, you know, right, right behind them. You know, there's a significant amount of houses that are on Aspen Hills boarding that property. And from Facebook discussions and whatnot, it appeared that there was a large amount of them that did not want commercial, whether that means anything or not. You know, it's a perspective thing. If you live next to that area, you may not want commercial for a city perspective. I could see why it would be good. But at the end of the day, if, as I see the general plan and the zoning maps, and there's some, I, you know, some personal property rights involved too, where, you know, if it's meeting the, the general plan and the zoning map, I think we have to be aware that the developer should have some influence. Now, if the developer, Ken, if you were talking about putting commercial in with the cell phone tower, I guarantee you Commissioner Steele is going to go back and look at those minutes tonight, then, you know, it may be a little different discussion. But certainly the residents were not in favor of having commercial. In fact, many of them came out to city council in fear that there was going to be commercial. And were assured from city council that this would not be commercial, nor would it ever be considered by the city council as commercial. So the minutes reflect from the city council meeting.
Any other last minute things? Because we're going to move on.
Can I just add one more thing? So in the final stages of the general plan committee, I was not yet on the planning commission, and I was on the general plan review committee as a citizen. So I'm trying to really carefully walk the line from what I've already said, being on that committee and between right now. So I do want to be respectful of those who are in favor of residential in this area. My whole reason is just, if we could structure it differently, I think we'd get a better product, but I just want.
I really would like to make a comment.
Ken, I'll allow it.
Thank you. When we met for the cell tower, a couple of weeks before that, the city passed, or shortly before that, the city passed the new general plan. Initially, the general plan called for regional, commercial on the front part of my property. That was the general plan. Transition to high density, from, to high density, and then back to my home. At that point in time, we were debating whether or not we would just sell the property or do some kind of a development. I paid an engineer. We came up with a design for, for just that, for the front part to be commercial. Then a transition higher density, and the last, on the, on the far north part of the property, low-density or lower-density. And that's what I was encouraged to do and allowed to do. Then with the new general plan, there was a lot of input from people in the north part of the city, not just a few. There are, there are, there were two city council members that basically at the work session said, "There will never be commercial in that area to the west of four hundred west." They represented an area as far as they were concerned. You can look at the minutes on that. There was one other council member that also concurred, and there were no dissenting comments from the city council in the work session. There was a strong movement to change that. And so shortly before the cell tower was proposed, I was, I didn't even know the general plan was being amended. And I was told the rules changed. The general plan now required residential. So I thought, hey, I explained to my siblings that own part of the front of our property that, that change probably cost us a half million dollars, but they weren't requiring, they weren't, that was not part of their financial plans anyway. They said, "What, what can you do?" And I said, "Well, it's now low-density residential." And so we looked at, I got my engineer to start over again, and we planned this development and worked closely with planning, incorporating a number of their suggestions, because that's what the new general plan, that's what I was told I should do. And I tried to comply and came up with a sim, something that looked like it would be good for the community and would fit in in the neighborhood. We talked to neighbors. We got input, and it was something that they liked. Some large lots in the north part, which are rare in Saratoga Springs, and some high-end footprint homes in a fif, in a fifty-five-plus community with a lot of open space. And with the, with the change, I mean, I've done everything that I can to try and comply. And now I come with that plan, which is in compliance with the general plan, with the small exception of that little sliver of land, which you're using somehow negatively against because it's regional, commercial. It's point three-four acres of land that I bought from, or point seven, whatever it is. It's a small amount of relatively worthless land to IHC. The city didn't want it because you didn't want, the city apparently did not want to have to maintain it. And I purchased it so that I could deal with aesthetics of a development, to make it look nice, to fit into a gateway area of our community, cutting into any profits that I'm going to have because it's just a maintenance issue. It's going to cost me money. And the neighbors and the city council are very interested in that going. And it seems to me that the bigger issue ought to be that smaller strip of land. There's, there's already residential and, and other things that are planned. There's, there's already residential and, and, and other things that are planned by neighbors that I have to the west. And there's the one strip of land, which is two property owners over, that was zoned commercial years ago. It seems to me that maybe that's one of the issues that the city ought to be looking at, since the general plan calls for the property west to be low, low density, low density. I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ken. Ken, I just wanted to say this. Um, the decision at this point is not in our hands anymore. We have done all that we can do for you. It goes to the city council. They have legislative authority on this decision and you'll, you'll need to meet with them and we've done everything we can. So we're going to close this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
And thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Steele? Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item number eight, approval of minutes, January 11th, 2018. Is everybody able to make their changes or suggest their changes offline?
I have one. I didn't do it over email. I just wanted to correct line one or clarify line 116. Should I, should I address this to you, David?
Excuse me.
I want, in the minutes, I wanted to correct, uh, line 116. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. She said, quote, "The code allows the city council to reduce one setback," end quote. See it? So, quote, "The code allows the city council to reduce one setback," end quote. Well, I mean, that's, that's what I wanted there instead. It, it only. See how the line, the line says, "The code allows one setback," period. That's, instead I wanted to say, "The code allows the city council to reduce one setback." No, not as a quote. Sorry, I just put the quote because that's what I wanted to say. Okay, thanks. That's it for me.
Any others? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from January 11th, 2018.
Motion from beyond a brush. Second?
Second.
The second from Commissioner Kilgore. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports of action. None needed tonight.
Can we have the record show that I didn't vote as I was absent on the 11th?
Thanks. Thank you. Commission comments?
I have one and I just want to say I like the format that we have in the minutes now with the, the lines, so it's easier to, to pinpoint things.
Any others? Director, report.
Uh, just to give you a heads up on one application we got this week. Fat Cats has now submitted for their community plan, village plan. So actually you'll be seeing at the next meeting, uh, will be the community plan, will be submit minor amendments to the community plan that you'll take a look at, um, and then the village plan for the Fat Cats property.
That objection rejoin?
He doesn't realize in retirement communities have a little commercial. Well, and they, they'd like to be able to get their hair done. Nails long. Small areas, regional commercial wouldn't hurt his development. Absolutely.